Good evening, everybody. I will call to order our regular city council meeting held virtually via WebEx of June 23, 2020. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could please all put your camera on and unmute your microphones and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of this country.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is the open forum. Is anybody here? Did we get any calls or emails for the open forum?
Mayor, we did not receive any calls or emails for the open forum. But just as a reminder, residents can submit emails to myself, KellyWynn@kwynn@richfieldmn.gov, or you can call my office phone at 612-861-9711.
Thank you. Seeing that nobody's here for the open forum, we will move to the next item, which is approval of the minutes of the special city councils and staff work session of May 20, 2020, the special city council and staff work session of June 10, 2020, the city council meeting of June 9, 2020, and the city council closed session of June 17, 2020. And before a motion is made, I do just want to pass it on to City Attorney Tejan to make a small update on that approval of the minute.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick comment regarding the minutes for the closed meeting that was held on June 17, 2020. That was a meeting held in a closed session with the city council, city manager, and city attorney and defense counsel relating to pending litigation. I need to make a slight revision to the minutes just to note the case that's involved with that closed session. So before, with any motion for approval, I would just ask that that be conditioned upon the noted change by the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to make a motion, Councilmember Supple, or ask a question?
I was just going to move up on the open forum with the noted change that Attorney Tejan mentioned.
Councilmember Wayland, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved. And I do just want to make a note, I did make this note at our work session, but I'll make it again at the council meeting. Councilmember Troutman will not be with us tonight, so there are just four of us. So the next item I'm so excited to do, it's the Dr. Mark Jenkins proclamation. And we have Mark Jenkins here, a proud Richfield resident that we are celebrating. And not only are we going to do a proclamation, we're going to give him the key to the city and hear a little bit more from Dr. Jenkins about his amazing work. So I have, our staff has the actual proclamation and the key to the city, and we will make sure there's the key. As everyone can see, Kelly's holding it up. And then we will get you a very nice proclamation. I just have a printed out copy here to read online now. But we will be giving you this great proclamation and the key to the city when you're able to meet us up, meet up with us at City Hall. And then after I read the proclamation, I will ask Kelly to just read what's on the little plaque with the key to the city. And then we'll ask Dr. Jenkins to just say a few words as well. So the proclamation reads, "We hereby pay honor to and celebrate the scientific career achievements of University of Minnesota immunologist Dr. Mark Jenkins. And whereas Dr. Jenkins was elected to the National Academy of Sciences on April 27 for his revolutionary work in immunology, the National Academy of Sciences has approximately 2,400 members and 50 foreign associates. Founded in 1863, the academy is charged with providing independent, objective advice to the nation on matters related to science and technology. Current and former members of the academy include Albert Einstein, Jonas Salk, Stephen Hawking, and Noam Chomsky. And whereas recently, Dr. Jenkins has been leading the University of Minnesota's work to develop an antibody test for SARS-CoV-2 virus, which is the virus that causes COVID-19. His team researched, tested, and helped administer clinical trials of the test that aim to determine a person's immunity to the novel coronavirus. And whereas Dr. Jenkins, a director of the Center of Immunology, a regent, and a distinguished McKnight professor in the Department of Microbiology and Immunology at the University of Minnesota Medical School. And whereas Dr. Jenkins has been an integral part in mentoring the next generation of immunologists, he sees them as his legacy in his professional field. His efforts provide guidance and expertise when necessary to his colleagues in the field, which led him to receiving the American Association of Immunologists Mentoring Award. And whereas, besides Dr. Jenkins demanding work in the field of immunology, he has also been a very active member in building a stronger, more cohesive Richfield community. Dr. Jenkins served as a member of the Richfield School Board from 2004 to 2008. And whereas, Dr. Jenkins is known throughout the world for his work on the adaptive immune system, which protects humans and other vertebrates from subsequent interactions with pathogens that may cause them harm. Now, therefore, I, Maria Reagan Gonzalez, Mayor of the City of Richfield, do hereby award Dr. Mark Jenkins the symbolic key to the city for his accomplishments and contributions to Richfield and the world, proclaimed this 23rd day of June, 2020." So we could just give a little clap for Dr. Jenkins. We're very proud of you, Dr. Jenkins. And I'm wondering if you could please take a moment to read what's on the plaque with the key?
Of course. So it says here, "The key to the city of Richfield presented to Dr. Mark Jenkins in recognition for your induction into the National Academy of Science on April 27, 2020, and for your revolutionary work in immunology, on behalf of the mayor and city council." We're very honored to be able to virtually present this to you tonight.
Absolutely. And I know council members have things that they'll want to share, and I know that there's family members on the line, but I want to pass it to Dr. Jenkins to just share a little bit about how it's been to receive this amazing award and recognition.
Well, I'd like to start by thanking the mayor and the city council members for this proclamation and the key to the city. When one of my brothers learned that I was getting the key to the city, he wanted to know if it would open the high school gym so that we could shoot baskets at midnight, but it was probably not that kind of key. But I'm very proud to have been elected to the National Academy. This is a dream come true for any scientist. It's been a long time coming to a University of Minnesota Medical School faculty member, over 50 years. And so, of course, I'm thrilled. And I'm proud to be recognized by the council. I'm a very proud resident of Richfield. My wife Karen and I have lived here for 32 years. Our children, Scott, Lauren, Denise, all graduated from Richfield High. They've all bought homes. They live here in Richfield. We're basically buying up the place. And so, and I tell all my colleagues, I'm proud to be from this great town of Richfield, four by two, as Barb Devlin used to say, but a great place to live. And again, thank you very much for this recognition.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jenkins. Any comments or questions for Dr. Jenkins from our city council members?
Yes, I wanted to say a couple of words.
Councilmember Garcia, yep, we can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to say that Dr. Jenkins is a modern day hero. Boy, do we need you and the work that you've done. You have really not only stood out, you know, in terms of getting this incredible and significant recognition, but you have also have also worked on COVID-19. And I know that the Columbia Women Voters did tape the portion of your presentation, and you can find it on YouTube. So I just wanted to say it's just wonderful. I just, I couldn't be prouder of you, and you deserve all the recognition. And I just did not want to say to Karen, Karen, the woman behind the man, good job.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. That means a lot to me. You're kind of, you're one of my heroes, one of the pillars of the community, so that means a lot. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Any other comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Supple?
First of all, congratulations and thank you so much for all that you've done for the community over the years, Dr. Jenkins. This is an incredible honor and very well deserved. And as I was listening to the mayor reading the proclamation and talking about how you were a mentor, I thought that really fit because you've kind of worked behind the scenes to help pass referendums for the schools. You've been a coach for two, three youth sports. You've been on the school board. And it just fit that you're always working for the youth, and now you're a role model. Because as Ellen Aldous said, that scientists have professional curiosity issues, and we need our youth to be professional curiosity issues, and we need more scientists. And so again, you're being a role model for everybody else. So thank you so much, and thank you for all you've done for the community. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary. That means a lot. I know I enjoyed working with you on CQC and the referendum days. And I know we're both proud of what we accomplished for the Richfield schools. And I would really, I'll put this out there, I put it out there before, but I'm more than, more than ready to help Richfield kids who are interested in science, open doors for them, come to my lab. I can help them make connections. And many Richfield students have taken me up on that over the years. And I'll continue to do that as long as I can.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just echo the many congratulations. This is a really prestigious award and a really big deal. And you're a really big deal. And so it's exciting to claim you as a Richfield resident and sort of bask in your glow a bit. But so thank you for the work you're doing. Obviously, the important medical scientific work around COVID, but also just for all the work you've done for our community over the years. Just thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Appreciate that.
And I'll just keep layering on the compliments, and I'll just echo the congratulations to you and your family for this amazing achievement. And just, you know, I actually was reading about you online in several different places. And there's just so many achievements that you've attained. And I think the most important thing is you're just a living, breathing example of someone who just loves the community, loves to share knowledge, and it's about the greater good, whether it's here in Richfield for our youth, whether it's just your involvement in raising your kids in this community and growing that sense of community and being that community builder, as Councilmember Garcia always talks about, the community builders, that's definitely who you are. Or whether it's inspiring, you know, young scientists, that's huge. So it's just an honor to, as our council members said, get to be a part of that. And hopefully, you know, you continue to inspire other Richfield residents to take that same path, because we need so many community builders like yourself. So it's an honor, and we're excited to continue supporting you in your work.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm, like I said, I'm proud to be from Richfield. And I want to, you know, some of our neighbors to the west get a lot of publicity. And so I'd like to see Richfield do well. So I'm going to keep at that.
Absolutely. Any last comments before we close this part of the agenda?
Well, I think for one thing, I'm sure that Communications Director is submitting this information to the Richfield Sun, but I hope he also is submitting that to the Star Tribune, because, you know, I mean, I just think it's just such a beautiful, beautiful, you know, recognition. And I know that you've done the University of Minnesota proud, so we want to also, you know, share your goodness with other people.
Thank you again.
Great. Well, thank you to the friends and family members who tuned in, and thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And we will see you soon, take a couple pictures with you and to give you your proclamation. So thank you for coming to our meeting tonight.
Thank you and for your work for the city. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Councilmember Wayland, so moved.
Garcia, second.
The motion to approve the agenda has been made by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Garcia. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is our consent calendar, and that will be with City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider the approval of the City of Richfield's Excel Energy Partners in energy application submission. Item B, continue the public hearing to consider the plating and vacation of easements at 6228 Penn Avenue South and 6200 Queen Avenue South, Lunsen Byerlys, to July 14, 2020. Item C, consider the approval of the first reading of a transitory ordinance vacating a right of easement on the property at 6228 Penn Avenue South, Luns, and schedule a public hearing and second reading for July 14, 2020. I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Garcia, I move the approval of the consent calendar.
Supple, second.
Consent calendar has been moved by Councilmember Garcia and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Are there any council member questions or discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask Analyst Martinez-Govina to please take the roll call vote.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. The next item, item number five, will go to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is consideration of the approval of the reservation of the lawful gambling premises permit by firefighters for healing to conduct lawful gambling at Sandy's Tavern, 6612 Penn Avenue South. On May 12, 2020, the city received an application for a premises permit to be submitted to the Minnesota State Gambling Control Board by firefighters for healing to conduct lawful gambling at Sandy's Tavern, 6612 Penn Avenue South. Firefighters for Healing, otherwise known as FFH, is a nonprofit organization founded in 2010. FFH's goals are to support burn survivors and their families, as well as firefighters and first responders entering the line of duty and in need of therapy. FFH planned to use the proceeds from their lawful gambling activities to support the operational expense of their current transitional housing apartment facilities and the designated transitional housing and care center currently being developed and planned for completion in 2021. The Public Safety Director has reviewed the background information and documents and approves of its contents and assumes no basis for denial. I don't know if staff wanted to add anything to that?
Mayor, council members, this is Jennifer Anderson. I am sorry, I don't have a camera on my computer tonight, but at this point, I don't have anything to add. I'm happy to answer questions, if there are any.
Is Mr. Johnson there?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I am here.
Okay. Okay, I wanted to ask, this is Garcia, I wanted to ask, you know, in order of, now you're building a new building in Minneapolis, I understand, right?
Correct. It's being developed currently across the street from HCMC, the burn unit, and it will be connected to the Skyway as well. And we will have, the plan is to have about 13 apartments on the second floor.
Okay, now I wondered, and what are the benefits for, besides increasing patronage, what are the benefits for Sandy's to do this? I mean, do they get any part of the profits or how do you handle that?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. In fact, we pay them on a monthly basis. We share out the proceeds essentially for me, the money that's made, they receive some back in the form of rent, but it's not capped. So the potential there, we're working a very good partnership with Matty O'Reilly, who's the owner there. And he's, he actually approached us. He was very excited about supporting the mission that we have. Currently, we have four apartments that, and we pay those completely. So the people who stay at the apartments or people that stay at the transitional care center when that's open, don't pay anything. So if they're coming from northern Minnesota, or they're coming from Richfield, or they're coming from wherever they might be, and they need a place to stay across the street from HCMC, or their family needs a place because their loved one is in the burn unit. Right now, we're the only ones that have those units available, and we make those available at free of charge. And so the plan for this is to really support statewide and even the surrounding states as well, to be able to have a place where burn victims or their relatives, or in many cases, firefighters themselves need a place to come for therapy. I was a 21-year firefighter myself, because I was the reason that the organization was founded. He was injured as a Minneapolis firefighter, and I think we were trying to reach out to the state. In fact, I'm on several committees where I get a chance to work with, you're fire chief very regularly on a number of things, a number of issues. So we extend the work, and to answer the question specifically about Sandy's, that's what Matty was really all about, trying to help support is our reach to so many different people and different populations.
Now, you have, there's four components here. One is the paper pull tabs and electronic tabs. The other one is bingo, an electronic bingo, and then the third is paddle wheel, and then the fourth one, tip board. Explain how tip board works.
Sure. And I'll tell you, a tip board probably will not be something that we will do. When we fill out for the state, it's to our benefit to check that we might be considering to do all of those. But at Sandy's Tavern, we'll go in with a vending machine initially and electronic pull tabs. A paddle wheel is essentially a very large wheel that you sell individual tickets for, the numbers that are on the board, and then you spin the wheel. It's fairly complicated, and it actually takes a lot of extra work. So one of the things that Matty did want to focus on was bingo, because he's trying to build a very good, strong community around Sandy's Tavern, and we want to help support that. So bingo would be one of the eventual programs that we could offer. Initially, however, we'd be doing a vending machine, and if there's time, if there's room and the facility would allow, we could expand to have actually a pull tab booth there. But we've seen a lot of success with vending machine and electronic tabs. And from a money back to the organization and back to the city, that's really the best source of revenue back.
Well, I'll say one thing, I think Catholics will appreciate bingo.
Good. Well, we're looking forward to running it for it, believe me. Yeah, Matty's very excited about it.
You know, the one thing that, I think this is, to me, a policy issue. You know, I've seen your website, and it looks really, really good and all that. And I don't know anyone on your board of directors, but I wanted to ask this question to other council members or, you know. I want to know if we start doing this, because right now we only have the two service clubs, the VFW and American Legion. They're currently closed. And Frenchmans, and Frenchmans is doing this for the Lions Club. What's to prevent us from having a bunch of nonprofits coming in and wanting to to set up a deal like this? Anybody thought about it?
This is Mayor Reagan Gonzalez. I'm actually wondering if we can discuss that also with Jennifer Anderson on our staff. So I don't know if you're able, Jennifer, to explain kind of what the permitting process looks like, what kind of regulations the City of Richfield has, knowing that these are, these permits are controlled by the state. And if, if for whatever reason, and I don't even know what type of issues could be brought with these type of permits, what type of concerns might people have that could warrant a review of these permits? So I don't know if you have any answers to those type of questions, going back to what Councilmember Garcia had asked the council.
Yeah, good question. So gambling permits can be issued to licensed on-sale liquor establishments or establishments holding a club license. So as you mentioned, you know, it's the American Legion, it's the VFW. On sale liquor establishments, you know, we've got, we've got 10 licensed in the community. We can issue up to 15. But when you look at some of those establishments and kind of what their goal is in terms of the atmosphere that they provide and their food offerings, you know, and this is just my, this is just my personal kind of guesstimation. But you know, when you go to Lynn 65, you're going there for a good dinner and maybe, you know, to hang with some friends and be on the patio. You know, if you're going to Con's Mongolian Barbecue, you know, I don't see them setting up, you know, gambling situation within their location. Giordano's is a family-style pizza restaurant. They don't have a really big bar. You know, I don't see, I don't see that fitting in with them. And so, you know, those establishments could ask to have gambling within their establishment, but I just don't, it just doesn't kind of fit their, you know, their atmosphere and their dining experience. You know, with the establishments that we do have that are providing, you know, pull tabs and things like that, you know, calls for service because of gambling, you know, I checked with the chief, is pretty non-existent. It's always usually for other things like, you know, disturbances or theft or, you know, any number of different things that could happen. And so, you know, that's just my take on, you know, kind of our landscape in Richfield. You know, I've been here almost three years. This is the first gambling application that we've processed through. You know, the Legion and the VFW have had theirs for many years. And so, you know, I don't see a rush of applications coming in. Um, and so, you know, I, I don't see a rush of, of applications coming in, um, so.
Well, I just, you know, Jennifer, it's just like I told you earlier today, you know, um, I don't, I don't want to make it to the point where, you know, that we set a precedence and that, that we can't say no to people after we've set a precedence. So those are my concerns. I just, um, you know, I, I have, um, I have, you know, I, I, I think it's a, it's an organization that, that is needed, and I don't have anything against the organization, I'm just talking, uh, uh, I'm seeing this as just a policy issue.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe this is an issue, you know, perhaps City Attorney Techen could, you know, is there, is there, um, potentially the option of putting a cap on the number of gambling licenses offered in the city, like we do with, um, you know, liquor licenses, and maybe we cap it at four? Um, and as, as people, or as establishments, you know, as they might not renew, um, you know, that would drop the number of, of active licenses in the city.
Um, yeah, Mayor and Council, um, that's certainly something I can look into. I'm not aware of anything right now off the top of my head that would, um, allow for a capping of those licenses. I know these are approved by the state, and then before a per- a permit can be issued, the, um, local unit of government needs to give approval and consent. Um, I'm just not, I don't have that answer right now as to whether you could set a limit on the number. But if that's something that the council's interested in knowing, I can certainly check into that and talk further with, um, Jennifer about that issue.
So, could council members weigh in? We have a couple, um, items on the table to discuss. So one is, are people interested in hearing more, um, in the future from Jennifer and, um, City Attorney Tejen on if we have the possibility of limiting the amount of, of these permits that we have in our city? I also know, um, Council Member Garcia asked us what we think as policymakers of how many, um, how many establishments we feel would be okay in our approach to gambling permits in general to the city? But then also, do council members have any additional questions for Firefighters for Healing, for Jennifer Anderson, um, or discussion points that they want to bring up in addition? Council Member Whalen?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I guess I, I don't have, um, I, I think I agree with what Council Member Garcia said. Um, I think in this case, Firefighters for Healing sounds like a great organization. I'm not, um, terribly concerned about this specific incidence, but I, I would be curious to know, um, I don't know that it needs to be a huge priority, given that the demand is, is low, as Jennifer Anderson was saying. Um, but would be curious to know, uh, if this is something that we could put a limit on, um, because I, I do think it, it would get, um, I mean, like, like she said, Jennifer said that, um, it, it's a different atmosphere being at a restaurant with, with gambling. And so I think suddenly, like, all of our restaurants had that, that would not be a deal, but, um, I guess I'm not expecting that to happen, so. But, um, more, more information would be helpful.
Thank you, Council Member Whalen. Council Member Supple?
Um, I have no problem with the current proposal, and I do think if we're going to have a policy discussion, which would be when there's not a proposal on the table, so if we can come to this in the future, and we can discuss it just on the merits of the policy, I think it would be good to look, like, do we want to have a cap, do we have a cap, and so of that? So, I would, um, support having staff.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not hearing you well, uh, com- uh, Mary.
Oh, I need to talk, can you hear me now?
Speak a little, yes, uh, yes, please.
I've been having tech problems tonight. Um, so what I was saying was that I don't have an issue with the current proposal, and it meets all of our guidelines. Um, I do think it would be good if staff could look at, you know, options of whether or not we can put a cap on and that kind of thing, and that we make that decision when there's not a particular, um, proposal on the table. So we're looking at it just from a purest policy standpoint. So I think sometime in the future, that would be a good thing to do. But, uh, as it currently stands, this does fit our current policy. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I, yes, I, I think, yeah, I agree. I think, you know, if, if we're going to vote on this, then, then we still need some more information before we go, you know, further into the future, just, just for our knowledge and, you know. It, it just, I think it's a good idea to, anytime that, that, like I said, you know, if we're going to set precedents, or, or, or if, how we're going to treat, you know, others that come forward.
Thank you, um, and, and I would concur with where the discussion is going in terms of, um, one, I would say that I am in support of this proposal tonight, and I appreciate, um, Firefighters for Healing being here. Ron, thank you for being here and explaining, um, the program a little more to us. And then, I would also just add, in that, um, policy kind of review or analysis moving forward, if you could just include what kind of leverage or discretion we have to say yes or no. I know in some situations, um, if it fits the ordinance, you know, we, we obviously don't have any basis for denial versus is this something where we do have more discretion or not? Um, and then, and then that, um, part of limiting the establishments too. So I don't think I have any other questions, um, but I just wanted to share my perspective on both items.
Mayor, that's certainly something I can look into further.
Great, thank you. And Ron?
Yeah, real quick, I, I, first, I want to thank you all very much. You've asked some very great questions, and in the future, I, I mean, I grew up in Ridgefield where, and, uh, my daughter and her husband just bought a house last fall there and brought their very first new resident to Ridgefield home yesterday, I will say. Uh, so, I, it's, it's, uh, it's a special spot for me all the way around. If I can be of assistance, as a member of the Board of Firefighters for Healing, Campy Manager, um, coordinating with Matty, I would be more than happy to do so. I've many years in Maple Grove and pretty familiar there with the gambling there. So, um, certainly don't have all the answers, but I know a lot of people that I can touch with. So if I can help, please feel free to call on us.
Well, I have one more question.
Yes, Council Member Garcia.
For Mr. Johnson, have you had a hamburger at Sandy's yet?
I, I absolutely. In fact, we, I, when we moved back to, we, we worked at Ridgefield, uh, probably twenty years ago, before we moved to Maple Grove, and lived there for ten or twelve years, and Sandy was a regular place for us, even before Matty bought it, so. Um, yes, one of my favorite places. I, I will be servicing that spot myself.
Okay, well, you have to vouch for the food, you know, so, so if you want me to vote for it.
Exactly, exactly. And then you'll come down for bingo, because it's really what he wants, for my community service kind of thing. He wants to draw on the community very, very well. He keeps harping on that, so.
Okay.
That's exciting. Any last comments or questions from council members? If not, if someone could make a motion, that'd be great.
Council Member Supple, I move to adopt the resolution approving the lawful gambling premises permit application by Firefighters for Healing to conduct lawful gambling at Sandy's Tavern, sixty-six, twelve, ten Avenue South.
Council Member Whalen, second?
Thank you. The motion has been made by Council Member Supple and seconded by Council Member Whalen. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council Member Supple?
Aye.
Council Member Troutman? Council Member Garcia?
Aye.
Council Member Whalen?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you so much for coming and visiting, and we look forward to playing bingo at Sandy's Tavern.
I'll look forward to seeing you all. Appreciate your help tonight, and you guys all stay safe.
Thank you. The next item is the City Manager's Report. City Manager Rodriguez?
I'm so sorry, Mayor. I was having trouble unmuting, so I apologize. Um, I don't have a big report for tonight. Um, I just want to caution folks that next meeting on July fourteenth, we will have three public hearings, um, and we will still be meeting virtually. So, um, Kelly outlined our process for providing public comment and public hearings, and also at the open forum. Um, but it's really helpful if you can contact our staff ahead of time to let us know if you're going to be emailing in comments, or would like to call in. And it, it will be, it will be difficult to, uh, handle that. Um, we've never had that many public hearings in a meeting and an open forum. So just ask for folks' patience. We will do our best. Um, I don't know if Blanca or Kelly want to add anything more on that?
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. I just wanted to, uh, also mention that because we only have one line, um, and Kelly can review all that contact information, but we do currently only have one line that manages both the open forum and the public hearings. So, there is, um, there is a way to, to call in, and you might be placed on a hold. There could be a potential chance that your call gets dropped, but we just want to make sure that everyone knows that we are, we're trying our best, and if you contact us ahead of time, that helps us tremendously, so we can plan appropriately and make sure that we have your contact information in case we do lose your call, um, that night. So I'll just let, uh, Senior Administrative Assistant Kelly Winn review some of the contact information to call for both the open forum and the public hearings of July fourteen.
Uh, so for the open forum and the public hearings for that July fourteenth meeting, it is like, um, Analyst Martinez-Govina stated, uh, one phone line that we will be manning. Um, the phone number for that will be six one two eight six one zero six five one. So we will be taking calls for open forum first. Uh, you can also call ahead, leave me a message, speak with me, or, um, send me an email. Uh, as I stated earlier in the meeting, again, that is K W Y N N at richfieldmn.gov. And my, uh, office phone is six one two eight six one nine seven one one. Um, we will take the open forum first, then we will state our first public hearing when that comes time in the agenda. We will take those calls. We will then, uh, have time to record it for the second public hearing, take those calls, and then record it for the third public hearing, and take those calls. So, we may ask you, when you call in, what you are choosing to speak for, um, and if you are choosing to speak for an item that we are not taking a call for, then we will ask you to call back. Um, if there are a large amount of people calling in, excuse me, um, it, uh, you may get dropped, um, just call back. Um, if we've got too many people on there, it may start to drop people, but it should be able to take quite a few callers. Just ask for your patience.
You know, Mayor, I wanted to, while Kelly, while Kelly was in, Blanca are both there, I just wanted to say that, that I appreciate their working with me, because I know I'm challenged when it comes down to technology. And, and I appreciate their patience and their, you know, and the time, uh, for helping me out. And then I also wanted to congratulate, I know this is not really the issue, but I wanted to congratulate, uh, uh, Blanca for, for the nice spread she got in the Ridgefield Sun, promoting and talking about our census. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Council Member Garcia. Any other questions or comments on the City Managers' Report portion of the agenda from council members? City Manager Rodriguez?
Mayor, I do have more to report, um, if there are further questions on the meeting on seven fourteen. I'll go ahead, um, and we're, uh, if, uh, Jennifer, our Public Health Administrator is still in the line, I'm, I'm going to give a brief update on what's going on with the virus. I'm happy to report that the local daily positive cases have been declining. Um, so that is good news. Um, we are, we continue to try and keep up with the, the governor's orders and his, um, additional, his administration's additional guidance. Um, we are gearing up to, um, we're working with the sports and the associations to begin competitive play, beginning on June twenty-fifth. We also need to make some, um, some changes to our preparedness plans. There's some additional things they want us to cover in it, and, including ventilation and drop-off and pickup for deliveries. Um, so we're working on that. Um, so I, I'll just pause there. I just, I also wanted to briefly mention the PAC meeting that we had on the four ninety-four, thirty-five W quarter recently, but are there any questions about the virus and our mitigations? No, okay. And then just briefly, um, Director Asher gave you an update, but we had a very good meeting, the policymaker advisory committee for the thirty-five W and four ninety-four quarter, um, was, was very good. We were able to raise our concerns about the proposed project A, um, about, and the overall implementation, and, uh, really grateful that our neighbors, our legislators, and Minda heard our concerns uh, about safety and mobility and equity, uh, on the east side of the corridor. And we had strong support, and Mayor, you mentioned this during our work session, strong support from, um, our, our neighbors, both Edina and Bloomington, as well as our Met Council Representative Molly Cummings, and the Transportation Chair, um, Council Member Jeff Barber, um, Representative Howard, Senator Wicklin, and Commissioner Gattell. So, um, very grateful that they were able to support us, and, um, we had a great conversation, and I feel confident that we are going to, um, move ahead and have more consideration for equity for the first project to be funded with quarters of commerce for that quarter. And also very grateful to Mayor Regan Gonzalez and Council Member Troutman, they led the way in the discussion. And that is it for my report tonight.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. Any questions or comments from council? Council members?
No, I thought that was a, I thought that was a good report.
Thank you, Council Member Garcia. Council Member Supple?
I just wanted to echo the thank you for representing us, um, Mayor Regan Gonzalez, and Council Member Troutman, and all the staff, and all of our, um, public officials that are in our neighboring communities and different roles of government. So I think it's really important for our voice to be heard, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. We provided a, a united, presented a united front for sure, and it will absolutely have an outcome of a better project, I'm confident. I think we put something on folks' radar that they weren't maybe paying attention to, um, and on such an important project in the most important quarter in the state, that's, we want to do better than that. So thank you to the staff and all the policymakers that helped, um, jump on the bandwagon for that. The next item is claims and payroll. That goes to Council Member Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we, we, we've got to, we've got to play, pay our staff, and if anybody has a claims issue, then we've got to take care of that too. So therefore, I will move claims and payroll.
Council Member Whalen, second?
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved by Council Member Garcia and seconded by Council Member Whalen. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council Member Sup-
Aye.
Council Member Troutman?
Aye.
Council Member Whalen?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. Claims and payrolls has been approved. Um, we, our last item is hats off to hometown hits. I'll start with Council Member Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first off, uh, I meant to mention this when we were approving the minutes, but wanted to, um, let anyone know who's curious- the minutes, but wanted to, um, let anyone know who's curious about, um, we, we had our preliminary budget and priority setting session. That was one of the sets of minutes we approved. So if you're curious about, um, what's kind of on the horizon for next year, what we're prioritizing, um, check out the, the summary from June 10th. Um, and then wanted to, uh, just highlight the, the people on our, uh, resident commissions know that we've started meeting again with all of them. There'd been a, a few months off, uh, with COVID and figuring out how to get meetings going again. But, um, I've sat in now on a couple Planning Commission meetings, couple Sustainability ones. I know the other council members are liaisons to others, but, uh, to our residents who aren't on them but are curious what's going on, uh, you can tune into those as well through, um, through live stream and, and keep up or reach out to, to the, um, to, to us on council or the commission members, uh, if you're curious to hear what's going on. Um, but especially, it's been fun being on the Sustainability Commission. Um, that was only their, their second meeting since, uh, it's been created. So I'm excited to see where that goes. Uh, we were talking about a climate, climate action plan for the year. Um, and then the last thing I'll mention is just an ongoing reminder, a lot of people, um, I've talked to haven't heard yet, but the, um, our recreation programming, uh, has moved virtually and there's something literally every day, um, that you can go and access the stuff that, um, that's the videos, the activities that have been happening. Um, some of them are events at our parks, um, that you do kind of on your own time. So really would encourage, um, especially any families who are wondering kind of how do we fill our time this summer? Um, there's a lot of wonderful things coming out of the Rec Department.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. Councilmember Garcia?
Mayor, but could I, could I excuse myself from the rest of the meeting?
Absolutely. Thank you for joining us, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. You know, when you've got puppies, they, they, you know, you, you've got to take care of them. So that's what I'm going to do now. Take them outside.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good, good job. Bye-bye.
Good. Thank you. Bye-bye. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm glad that, um, Jennifer Anderson is still on the line because I wanted to do a shout out to her for all the work she's done as her new health administrator. And she's puts out a lot of information out to the community and also to the council. And lately, she's been reminding us that we still need to be diligent in preventing the spread of COVID. And some of those reminders she put out were that you should stay home when you're sick, you should keep washing your hands, you should cover your cough, keep practicing social distancing, and keep wearing masks. And also today, I don't know if it's on the website, but for sure on the City Facebook page, they posted four different sites that you can get tested today and tomorrow. So people can sign up to go to get tested. It's nearby Indianapolis. So please keep those things in mind. And again, thank you so much to the staff and Jennifer Anderson for all you do to help keep us safe from COVID. Um, and then the second thing to add on to what Councilmember Whelan said about the Recreation Department, um, in the past, we've always had the, uh, Urban Wildland Race to support Wood Lake Nature Center. So this year, the staff backed creative and to keep us safe, but also to continue to support Wood Lake Nature Center. The 2020 Urban Wildland is going to be a virtual race. And so there's going to be four different events that people can do. They can do the half marathon, they can do a 10 mile, they can do a 10K, or they can do a 5K. And you end up submitting your times between July 25th and August 1st. So if, if you're listening to this and you'd like to sign up for that virtual race, you go to urbanwildland.com and it has all the registration you can use. So I'm hoping we get a great attendance for that because, um, the Urban Wildland helps, um, promote Wood Lake Nature Center and also helps aid for programming so that our, these from around the area can come and go to Wood Lake Nature Center for more, for learning about it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Um, I have a couple updates just to let people know that the state's Small Business Assistance Program is now available on the DED website. Um, our city staff will be pushing that information out through various city channels. But please, um, if you are a small business in Richfield or, or anywhere in the state, the state funds are now, um, you're able to apply now for those funds. So please spread the word to our small businesses. We want to make sure that we keep as many businesses as possible through this pandemic. And then I believe once those, um, funds are out the door, then Hennepin County will release their Small Business Assistance, but you cannot, um, receive both. So there'll be another wave of funding through the county, which will come after the state fund. So we'll be sharing that information in our communication channels as well. And then I just want to say again, I know we've said, said this before, but congratulations to our Richfield senior graduates. It was great to be a part of the, um, there was a little parade of our Richfield graduates through the Augsburg Park last week, and it was just a, a different experience. But it's so great to see how the community's still finding so many ways to come together and build community. Um, so congrats to our grads. I know it probably wasn't exactly what you had hoped for, but it sure is memorable. And I know that everyone will say, remember when we graduated, we were going through this global pandemic. Um, and then lastly, I just want to remind people, we have so many amazing organizations in our city and community. Right now, people want to get engaged, people want to change, make change, people want to, um, grow community, they want things to be more equitable. And that really starts with every single person making that commitment as individuals, as a family, and finding ways that they can, um, make that actionable. So please remember all the great organizations that we have in Richfield doing great work. And a couple, um, groups that I was just either talking to recently or had the pleasure of being on their, on their WebEx calls were the League of Women Voters. Men and women can be a part of the league. Um, and we're always looking for new members. We're looking for leadership. And I will tell you, um, the women who are in the League of Women Voters are really, um, some of the trailblazers for our city and community. And they've been great mentors and, and have really done a great job of passing the baton. So we want to continue growing that momentum through the league. And then also the Richfield Foundation, which provides support and assistance to nonprofits and, and efforts across the whole city. Um, and they also do the annual wine tasting event. So two great organizations that are currently looking for additional members, please consider, um, joining a group to make change here in our own city. So with that, um, seeing that this is our last item, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.